Good evening and welcome to our Glendale City Council meeting. If you would like to comment on any item that's on the agenda, please fill out a gold speaker card and hand it to the police officer in the back of the room. The mayor will call your name and when it's your turn to speak, you can make your way to the podium. All speakers have three minutes. If you would like to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members. Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Leandro Baldonegro of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Barrow District, Councilmember Ray Malnar of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
All right, and good evening and welcome to Glendale City Council meeting, June 11th, 2024. This meeting is called to order. Roll call is not going to be called because everybody's here. If you take note of that, that would be awesome. Our next two items on the agenda are the invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Kim Zell Ayers, I hope I pronounced that correctly, with Desert Hills Bible Church here in Glendale. So gentlemen, if it's appropriate, if you're wearing a hat, if you'd remove it, if everyone would please stand for the invocation, then I'd ask you to please remain standing for our pledge. Did I pronounce your name right?
Yes, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Gracious sovereign God, as we gather in this council meeting tonight, we humbly come before your throne of grace, seeking your divine wisdom and guidance. Please grant discernment to each council member as they deliberate on the matters at hand. May their decisions reflect your righteousness and be aligned with your will, bringing benefit to this city and ultimately glorifying your name. And your mercy help us to navigate the intricacies with clarity, to seek justice with compassion, and to prioritize the well of, the well-being of all our citizens. May this gathering be marked by humility, honesty, and sincere desire to serve the common good. Please grant us the courage to make difficult choices and the grace to extend mercy where it is needed most. Lord, we entrust this meeting into your hands, knowing that you are the ultimate source of wisdom and power. May your presence be felt among us, guiding our hearts and minds towards your perfect will. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes from the May 28, 2024 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve May 28, 2024 meeting minutes?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve the minutes of the May 28, 2024 voting meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilmember Clark to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's, the ayes have it. And so we have, how many folks here are getting sworn in? One, okay. I'll meet you up here. Okay. If you would hold up your right hand, say aye, state your name.
Aye.
There you go. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that the end, the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. All right. Come over here and we'll get a picture of this. Moving on to consent agenda, items three through seventeen, items on the consent agenda. They're of routine nature, they've been previously studied by this city council at a workshop. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Do we have any speaker cards for any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items three through seventeen?
Yes, Mayor. Move we approve consent agenda items three through seventeen.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Clark to approve the consent agenda items three through seventeen. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's, the ayes have it, do have it, and so that motion also carries. Moving on to consent resolutions. Ms. Bauer, would you read consent resolution items eighteen through twenty-one by number and title, please?
Item eighteen, resolution number R24-39, a resolution council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving the 2024 application for a Proposition 202 grant on behalf of the organization Del Corazon de Jessica in the amount of forty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars from the Action Indian Community for Community Aid. Item nineteen, resolution number R24-40, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the regional public transportation authority for the purpose of providing the Platinum Program. Item twenty, resolution number R24-41, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a grant pass-through agreement with the city of Phoenix, FAIN number AZ2024-001-00, for the purpose of providing transit services. Item twenty-one, resolution number R24-42, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into a contract amendment number one to an intergovernmental agreement with the city of the Phoenix, grant number AZ2021-026, AZ2021-028, and AZ2021-049, for the purpose of providing transit services. That concludes the consent resolutions and there are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to approve items eighteen through twenty-one on consent resolutions agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt consent resolutions number eighteen through twenty-one.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from Vice Mayor to approve items eighteen through twenty-one on the consent resolutions agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's, the ayes have it, do have it, and so that motion carries. Moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item twenty-two, please?
Authorization to enter into an agreement with Albert Haller and Associates for contract transaction privilege, sales, and use tax auditing services. There are no speaker cards.
No speaker card. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item twenty-two?
Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the professional services agreement with Albert Haller and Associates as described.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Baldonegro, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I will explain my vote.
Go ahead.
On this item and the two following items under bids and contracts, they are all five-year contracts, and as my habit in practice, I will be voting no on each of these because they do not allow for continuity of oversight by council members, so I vote nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item two-three, please?
Award of RFP 24-40 and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Kuna Klow Corporation for Labor Compliance Services. There are no speaker cards. Okay, any questions from the council?
Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item twenty-three?
Mayor, move to award, excuse me, a motion for number twenty-three.
I need you to speak in the mic a little bit louder.
I apologize, sir. I've, I moved, moved to approve item number twenty-three.
All right, break it. Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Baldonegro, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Baldonegro, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item two-four for us?
Award of RFP 24-21 and authorization for the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Application Software, Inc., for the administration of health, flexible spending accounts, dependent care accounts, COBRA administration, and retiree billing services. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion from the council, item twenty-four?
Mayor, I move that we approve item twenty-four, award of RFP 24-21.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, Councilmember Baldonegro, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item two-three, please?
Award of RFP 24-40 and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Kuna Klow Corporation for Labor Compliance Services. There are no speaker cards. Okay, any questions from the council?
Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item twenty-three?
Mayor, move to award, excuse me, a motion for number twenty-three.
I need you to speak in the mic a little bit louder.
I apologize, sir. I've, I moved, moved to approve item number twenty-three.
All right, break it. Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Baldonegro, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Baldonegro, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item two-four for us?
Award of RFP 24-21 and authorization for the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Application Software, Inc., for the administration of health, flexible spending accounts, dependent care accounts, COBRA administration, and retiree billing services. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion from the council, item twenty-four?
Mayor, I move that we approve item twenty-four, award of RFP 24-21.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, Councilmember Baldonegro, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Moving on to ordinances, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item two-five?
Ordinance number O24-19, an ordinance of the mayor and the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona. One, authorizing the execution and delivery of a depository trust agreement including the defeasance of certain transportation excise tax revenue obligations with lawfully available funds. Two, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this ordinance, including the execution of certain documents. And three, declaring an emergency.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report this evening is Amy Lindsay, Assistant Director, Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. This item is to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager, assistant city manager, or budget and finance director to execute documents and take necessary actions to apply legally available funds to the defeasance of any or all of the 2015 or 2017 transportation excise tax revenue obligations for debt service savings if it is determined to be financially advantageous to the city. Representatives from RBC Capital Markets LLC, who is the city's underwriter, will be available for questions.
That all you got?
That's all I got.
That was easy. That was easy. Do we have any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
How much will we save as a result of this action over time?
I'm going to defer that question to Tom Carlson.
Good evening, I'm Tom Carlson with RBC. So the city is expected to save about 4.8 million dollars over time.
Thank you very much. I think it's important that people understand that we don't refinance on a whim, we only do it when we can seek substantial savings, and this is one of those instances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move item twenty-five, ordinance number 24-19.
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Baldonegro, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, makes it unanimous. Item number twenty-six, I do have one speaker, ordinance 024-20, Ms. Bauer.
Ordinance number O24-20, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 25, nuisances, Article 2, specific acts, omissions, and conditions, by adding Section 25-22, repeat offenders, and setting forth an effective date.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening on this item is Rick St. John, Deputy City Manager.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance, sir. We're asking you to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 25 of the Glendale City Code, adding a repeat offender ordinance in Section 2522, as read by the clerk. You have the exact ordinance and the language of the council report, but I do want to point out that a constituent called Councilmember Turner, and there is a change that we should probably make. In subsection A of the proposed ordinance, it refers to chapter, or chapters 24 and 25 as titles 24 and 25. After speaking to Mr. Bailey, we think it is more prudent to refer to them as chapters, as that's how they're listed in the municipal code. So we are asking that when we adopt this ordinance tonight, we adopt it with the amendment changing from titles 24 and 25 to chapters 24 and 25. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council? Hearing none, okay, thank you. Mr. Wilfong.
My name is Warren Wilfong, Ocatillo District. Whenever we have an ordinance like this that is being changed, I like to put it in real-life situations. I would like to ask Mr. St. John a couple of questions here. If you can have this right here.
Yeah, we're not going to have you guys go back and forth, state your questions, and then when he's done, he can either come back up, or after we're done, he can always come up to you.
There's going to be several questions. I mean, we need to fix this problem today. We don't want to come back to it again.
You have two and a half minutes, so go ahead and state your question, sir.
My question is, if you look on the first page, or let's go to the last, these are open cases, current open cases. On the last page, if you look at it, the first one is dirt yards and grass above six inches. I want to know, it has nine or eight inspections, where each inspection, the violation has been seen. I want to know from Mr. St. John, how would the new repeat policy affect this? When would the repeat offender policy correct this problem? This is a problem that we have within our code compliance department. So this is the first one, has nine inspections, each inspection has been observed as violations. The next one, commercial vehicle in the driveway, again, multiple inspections, okay? More than three violations that have been seen. When does the repeat offender go into place on the new ordinance? The next one, parking in the front yard, multiple, up to five inspections, three of them where the observation has been seen, parking in the front yard. Each, first two have been open for seven months, six, oh, eight, I think actually eight months. This one's been open for a month. When does it go into effect on these current cases and the hundreds that are out there right now? Because this is our problem. You know, they're talking about gaming the system, there's certain residents that are gaming the system. The code compliance department is allowing them to game the system. This goes on forever, it never stops. If we follow the current policy written and the code enforcement policy, three observations, and they get a citation, they have eight inspections where they've seen the observation, and it's still, and it's still open for another inspection. So I would like to see, when would all these take place with current cases right now and all the ones that are out there? This is the problem, and we need to fix it today. Or do you want to come back?
Okay, thank you. I'll leave this up for him. Okay, it's the only speaker card I had on this issue. Is there any other questions, anything from the council?
Let him go first.
I guess, I guess my, I would like to, I believe I know the answer to these, but I think, answer the questions that Mr. Wilfong asked regarding how, when would this new ordinance affect these particular cases? When they, would they be considered repeat offender?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Malnar, the ordinance goes into effect thirty days after it's voted in by this council. So thirty days from now, we would remove, or we would amend our administrative policy to better align what the ordinance has been presented tonight, and we would start using this ordinance as a repeat, to handle our repeat offenders.
And I think the question was, if I may, Mayor, if that ordinance were in effect immediately today, how would these cases be impacted? What would, when would these cases, there's three cases that were written out here, when would they have been considered a repeat offender?
Member, our mayor, Councilmember Malnar, by the ordinance, if someone offends twice for same or similar violations, they receive a letter from code compliance letting them know they're designated as a repeat offender. On the third offense, we would cite them as a repeat offender, along with any other citations due to the violations.
So in this case, since they were observed and noted, is that considered a violation since it was observed by an inspector?
Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, it is by case. So there may be multiple inspections on one case, that would count as one violation. They get another open case with observed violations, that's now number two. They would receive the letter designating them as a repeat offender. After we close that second case, if a third case is opened, they could be cited as a repeat offender.
Okay, I think that clarifies it. So basically, a case, once it's open and closed, and it happens twice, the third time is considered a repeat offender, is that correct?
The third, Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, the third case is when we can cite them as a repeat offender, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. St. John, if the council does approve this ordinance tonight, and it goes into effect in thirty days, do all of our residents start at zero, and it's only new violations that begin to add up against the repeat offender ordinance? Or are the, any violations that are currently on the books, I think going back a year is what the ordinance says, are those also, so do some people start with a head start, or do we all start at zero?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, some people would start with a head start, so to speak. We have about forty cases that we worked last year that would qualify and did qualify for our administrative policy for repeat offender program, which is very similar to this. So we would fold those cases into this ordinance, and they would have a bit of a head start because of the number of violations that have already occurred. I'm looking at Michael Bailey.
Mayor and council, understanding this ordinance is prospective, so to the extent that there may be an item that becomes a violation that may be existing now, it, this is deemed, and I hate to do this, but it's, everybody's starting at zero once this is passed. Because we're not going to, the way this is drafted is it's not going to revert back and penalize people for actions in the past. So it's, in thirty days, day thirty-one, people start with a zero, but I think to the extent how that's been handled by code in terms of whether it's been a notice of correction, which is technically not a violation, they would still be subject to the notice of violation, which would be a hit. But to the extent somebody has, let's say, two citations as of today, and they have a third on day thirty-one, no. And if you, and if you want to, we can move for that, but I think we need to have probably a more significant discussion about what that means, because in that case, you are potentially penalizing people for actions that they took prior to you even having this on the books.
Mayor, if I may, maybe for some clarity, the current ordinance establishes repeat offense, or repeat offenders as an offense that we can cite. So what I hear Mr. Bailey saying is we wouldn't be able to cite this chapter unless prospectively they violate the provisions of the chapter. But we do have an internal process, that's the timeline process, for how long do you get to correct a violation? And we talked about that at length in workshop, that the more violations you have on your property over a given period of time, the less time we give you to correct it, because the education has already been done. If I, if, unless I'm speaking out of turn, Mr. Bailey, I think we would be able to administrate how we investigate the case under our administrative policy for repeat offenders, but we wouldn't be able to cite this chapter or this new section until they met the provisions of the new section, which could be any length of time depending on how often they violate.
Correct. Mayor and council, that's correct.
Well, I'm glad we got that solved. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. St. John, how would the, under the, under the new ordinance, how would the cases on hold, I mean, that's basically one violation that just keeps being cited, and then they put back, back on hold, but how, how do these, I'm losing my voice, how do these on, on hold cases, how are they affected by this ordinance?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, I'd again have to look at Mr. Bailey, but I think once the case is adjudicated, that means it's closed, then we can count, as long as that closure happens, when this ordinance is in effect, we can count that as a first strike, so to speak.
So, oh, go ahead.
No, that, that's correct. I think, well, there's an element of this, and I'm trying to understand better what the council's seeking. Are you looking at the policy change? Because there will be a policy change, which will allow those that fall within the policy to be handled under the existing ordinance, which does, there is a repeat offender policy that exists. This won't impact that per se, but if you want to cite under this code, you're going to, it's going to need to be three new violations. Somebody who's within the policy that hasn't been cited yet, but right now they're in the policy, and they are cited later, yes, that would qualify, because that's not a cite. But to the extent that somebody has been cited now, that would not be number one.
Mayor, can I ask a question then? So, okay, so let's just say, one of these examples is on, on hold five months ago, reinfection scheduled. If the reinfection happens and the violation is observed then, is that strike one? Or because this is already existing case, you can keep kicking the can? I'm trying to understand.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, it depends on whether or not the citation has already been issued. So we do re-inspect after a citation has been issued for court purposes. So without knowing and looking at the details of the case that's being referenced, I don't know if a citation has been issued yet. If a citation has not been issued, and we don't issue the citation until after this ordinance is codified, it would be strike one. If it's issued before this ordinance is codified, it doesn't count.
Okay, so it would, Mayor, if I could, so once that citation's been issued, the case is still put on hold for a reinfection?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, the case is on hold until it's adjudicated by a court. So it's on hold through the entire court proceeding, and we do rein inspections based on hearing days. So if someone's got a hearing in front of a hearing officer or a judge, depending on if it's civil or criminal, we do the inspection typically the day of that hearing. If it's an early morning hearing, we might do it the afternoon before, take photographs of the violation to demonstrate to the court that the violation is still occurring. We document that inspection in Glendale One, which is our records management system currently.
Right, okay.
And then we put the case back on hold, depending on what a judge decides. And then we put the case back on hold depending on what a judge decides. A judge may continue the case. And then we have to wait until the new hearing date.
So essentially, just want to make sure I understand, essentially, we would have to resolve one way or another with penalties through the courts or compliance or however, resolve all of our existing cases that are already on, in our database. And then any new violations, even if it's at the same address, if it's a different violation that is already in the system, maybe one is for weeds and then now there's another, a new one for parking, that would be strike one. But we have to let all of the cases that are already open and exist in the database go through the existing policy.
Mayor, councilmember Tomalchaf, not necessarily. So any case that's open today, whether it's open or on hold and open, it depends on when that case closes. If it closes prior to this codifying, it won't count. If it closes after this codifies, then it will count as strike one.
Okay, I may have said that wrong, Mayor. So if any of these are still open at the end of the thirty days when this ordinance takes effect, then those need to stay on the track they're already on and separate from this repeat offender ordinance?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so a question I have, what's the plan to educate the folks that things are changing and we're gonna get real serious about this?
Mayor, education occurs after the second violation and it, it's been that way for a number of years.
Okay, that's not what I'm talking about.
I understand, but we, we weren't planning on doing any type of specific notification to the entire community that we now have a repeat offender ordinance. We've been operating under the administrative policy. And so some, when someone qualifies as a repeat offender, we've been notifying them via certified mail.
Okay, and that's not, that still wasn't my question. I think, I think that we should, whether it's Glendale One, whether it's in Waterville, I, I don't, you know, each individual council member or all the above. I think we need to let citizens know that we have a new way of dealing with this and the tolerances are gonna be much tighter. We're not gonna have the leniency we've had for the last several decades.
Yes, sir.
But I'd like to see that, almost, you know, if this is approved tonight, and I think it will be, I'd like to see that come out really, really soon.
Mayor, I can work with our public affairs team and get something out quickly.
Okay, question?
Yes, I have one question. So I thought I heard you say that usually when a case is on hold, it's pending a court proceeding or the outcome of a court proceeding. Is that correct?
I wouldn't say that's usual. I would say that's sometimes the case.
So why would a complaint be on hold for thirty days or forty-five days then? If it's not due to a court proceeding?
There's a number of reasons why that may be.
Give me a couple of good ones.
So on first inspection, there may be a single violation, item stored in public view. On second, second inspection, those items are still there, but there's also now cars illegally parked. On third inspection.
Can I stop you right here and ask a question? You go back the second time and you observe the same violation, but there are new ones in addition.
Correct.
Right? So you put it on hold because there are new ones?
Mayor, councilmember Clark, the case isn't put on hold based on violations. The cases are put on hold so they don't escalate in the system unnecessarily.
Escalate to what in the system unnecessarily?
So they would escalate to the city manager's office. If they're not, so in Glendale One, because of the way that it's built, and you need to remember, Glendale One's not a records management system for code. We're using it as one, but it's not built to be one. So there's an escalation feature in Glendale One. If I get assigned a Glendale One and I don't handle it within, say, forty-eight hours, it goes to my supervisor. If forty-eight hours after that, it's still not handled, it goes to their supervisor. And so if we didn't put these cases on hold, so we give them seven days to correct the violation, well, that's forty-eight hours, it would go to the code official, forty-eight hours after that, it would go to me, when in reality, we gave them seven days to fix the violation. So it's been addressed. So we had to add a feature to Glendale One to stop that clock. It's just a clock stopper so that the cases don't escalate to supervisors. That's the only reason why that hold feature is on there.
Okay, I, I'm gonna make a few comments. Because code, code, I think, has been problematic for many councilmembers over the years. First, let me say that I respect you and I respect your work. You are in a very difficult position dealing with code and you're trying to be fair to everyone. And I understand that. But nevertheless, code remains the bane of many people's existence and certainly of mine. Mr. Wilfong got up and spoke tonight. Many people don't like Mr. Wilfong. He's abrasive. He can be abrasive, but he's passionate. And I think what his motivation is, is he's trying to protect his neighborhood and, and preserve property values within his neighborhood. And because of that, he, I think at times he gets frustrated. And just like I don't necessarily understand the entire system, I don't think he does either. Sometimes he's right, sometimes he's wrong in what he complains about. And I will acknowledge that lately, some of the things that he has sent to council have been right on. I think at some point, we are going to have to recognize that there are problematic areas within the city of Glendale that deserve extraordinary attention. And to this day, that has never occurred. And if we want to keep Glendale as a great city for everyone, we are going to have to acknowledge those problematic areas and really focus our attention on them. One of them for me, because I used to live there, was the O'Neill neighborhood, which is a square mile, Fifty-Ninth Avenue to Sixty-seventh, Camelback to Bethany. I have seen that deteriorate over the years. And I am very sad for those people. Because as that neighborhood deteriorates, as that square mile deteriorates, so do their property values. And it's not right for a lot of people who do maintain their properties in that area to be affected by those who, who simply don't care. So I would ask, and it's not something I'm going to be handling in the years to come. It will be up to this council. That council perhaps identify for code your problematic areas and bring those to the attention of the code department and make sure that those areas are addressed appropriately. I think the time has come to do so. Because I have turned in complaints that were not resolved for six months, which is ridiculous. And I don't think it should be that way. I think we either take action or we do not. And if we do not, we should clearly state why we are not taking action as a city. And with that, I'll, I'll stop. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Councilmember Tomalchaf?
Thank you, Mayor. Well said, councilmember Clark. And I know our frustration is there's not, not a lot we can do. It's why I brought forward this item of interest as a, as a ordinance because we do have, I believe, a covenant with the residents of this city to, to do our best to try to enforce our rules and regulations that we have to protect neighborhoods' property values. We all know what the broken window theory is. And when somebody sees a box truck or cars parked in the front yard, then somebody buys a house in that neighborhood and says, "This is allowed here," and it just escalates. So I, I understand that, but you said something that really caught my ear. You said, "We do not have a code record management system." And I don't, that's the first time I've heard that. I've been here ten years. But I, and I, I'd imagine that there's all kinds of things municipals can buy to help manage records. But I'm wondering, because you said that Glendale One is not intended to be a code records management issue. And I know, I'm happy to bring this forward as a council item of special interest, but is the issue that we're having a problem that we're trying to manage these records through Glendale One when it's not really designed for code issues, is that an issue?
Mayor, councilmember Tomalchaf, let me clarify. We had a records management system called Hanson. It was used by Development Services, the Fire Marshal's Office and Code. It was an archaic system. We needed to move away from it. We hired a company several years ago to build our business licensing, our development services permitting, fire marshals license, or not licensing, but inspections and all those kinds of things, and to case manage for code. After probably a year and a half, two years of engagement with the company, they were not meeting our needs and we had to terminate our contract with them and go a different direction. We are currently working with another company who has successfully built a records management system for code. This summer, we will be running tests and scenarios through the system to make sure that there aren't any unintended consequences or things that are missing. And we expect to be able to go live with that system in September. So we are nearly at the end of using Glendale One as a records management system for code. But it has taken several years for us to get there because of that first vendor that could not provide what they said they could provide.
So I suspect, Mayor, if I could, that that possibly part of the problem.
Hold on just a second. We're getting way away from where we're supposed to be.
Well, I.
But we are, and, and the attorney just reminded me of that also.
Okay.
So I, I need to bring it back to this.
All right, thank you, Mayor. But part of the problem with people not understanding is why they, why these things say "hold", which is part of the conversation we're having, part of the problem is, is that the records being managed in a platform that's not designed for managing these records. So I think that is, is that an okay thing to say?
Mayor and council, what's before you as an ordinance tonight for a repeat offender program?
Okay.
So what I would suggest is maybe when we get the next opportunity, bring this up as a council item.
Well, he's already, they're already taking care of it, but I was just curious if that was what the, that's what he said, is that it wasn't designed for it. So I'm happy to hear that we're resolving that and I hope it has a positive effect. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, yes, I want to, want to walk us back here. This started off as a council item of special interest. Staff worked on a repeat offender ordinance. We brought it to workshop. We spent over an hour and a half in workshop. We answered questions. And then the staff told us to bring it back tonight for a vote. And so the, the issues that are coming up aren't really related to the repeat offender program. This was, we're only doing what the council has asked us to do. If there's other areas we need to fix, we certainly have the opportunity to continue to work and refine that. But in defense of, of really of the staff, is we, this is the ordinance you asked us to bring back. And if we need to continue to make adjustments to it, let's have that conversation and we certainly can continue to evolve this ordinance. But none of the Glendale One issues are affected by this ordinance. I mean, it's really the tool that you asked us to have to be able to go after the repeat offenders.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I understand what, what you have said, Mr. City Manager, and I concur with your remarks. We should be focused on the repeat offender ordinance. But this issue, I, I will just say this as an aside. This issue of code has been very vexing to many people over the years. And it never seems to improve. And I think that's why we strayed in other areas of discussion, such as the remarks that I made. And, and I know they were not germane to the repeat offender ordinance, which I do support. But that's what happens when we talk about code. It seems to always move in other areas and it gives us an opportunity to perhaps voice our concerns about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so, far as I'm concerned, I, I think, I, is this a perfect solution? Not, I don't think it's perfect, but I think it's a step in the right direction.
Yes.
And, and we're gonna figure out some, some, sir, you had your three minutes. No, you had your three minutes. Okay, again, I'm not. No, sir, not right now. We're gonna go ahead and take a vote on this. I'm gonna need someone to move it, someone to second it. And as we go along, if we find that there's other steps we can take to make this better, to accomplish the goal that Mr. Wilfong and everybody would like to see, then I'm sure that's what we'll do. So I'm, I'm asking for a motion.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve ordinance, item number twenty-six, ordinance twenty, oh, twenty-four dash twenty, with the following minor amendment. That in section twenty-five dash twenty-two A, the word titles be replaced with the word chapters.
Second.
Okay, so a motion from councilmember Melner, a motion from councilmember Melner, second from councilmember Tomalchaf. An amended motion, I guess I should say. No, it's actually, it's just a motion. Yeah, okay. Okay, so you've heard that. We'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Councilmember Baldinagro, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I, I know this is, is, has been a boisterous time on this particular ordinance. But I really feel we're moving in the right direction. And the comments that were made tonight about the direction that code is moving, I, I think this is going to really help overall. It's not perfect, but I, I support it a hundred percent. And I think we will be able to make a difference in, in the city. So I vote aye.
Councilmember Tomalchaf, how do you vote?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote also. I wanna, I just wanted to thank staff for the time they put into this on a council item of special interest. You know, I mean, very, very little things in life are perfect. I think it's a step in the right direction, as you said, Mayor. We can continue down this road of trying to figure out things we can do to, to protect neighborhoods' and property values. And I also want to thank the council for their support on the council item of special interest, and I vote aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I think we're, we're all familiar with the eighty-twenty rule or the ninety-ten rule where a small portion of the population, whatever it might be, requires the most attention. And I think this is a situation here. I think it's important that we give our code department the tools in which they can be effective. And I think that this ordinance helps them to be more effective. It, I expect and have every reason to believe that it's actually going to impact a very small number of our residents directly. But indirectly, by impacting their neighbors, improving the quality of life, even more so than the property value, improving the quality of life of their neighbors, I think that we can, this will help us make a difference in our neighborhoods. And with that, I vote yes.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna explain my vote. There was a statement made by a, a member that, that we haven't done a very good job. I, and I don't remember the exact words that were used, but this is not to be challenging or, or opposite. But I, I would say that one council member here probably stood out above everybody as far as trying to make a difference in one of the very complex, difficult situations. And it's councilmember Melner. I know that he's gone out himself. I know he's put people together, got groups together to go out and work in a very, very, very challenging area. And most of this code enforcement, I think, has come from that area. So I, I just wanna kudos to you for the work that you've done. You know, I, I don't know if people really pay that much attention to how much work you've done in there and gotten people excited about trying to get their properties built back up. But I think you've done a good job and this is just a continuation of that. So thank you for what you've done. With that, I, I do vote aye. This does pass unanimous. Ms. Barer, would you introduce item twenty-seven, please?
Ordinance number oh, twenty-four dash twenty-one, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of deeds, easements and a dedication at various locations throughout the city and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here provided staff report this evening is Glendale Principal Engineer Jamie Taver.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a request to accept right-of-way for roadway purposes at three locations and a waterline easement at one location. Accepting these property interests will allow the city to operate and maintain the infrastructure currently. the infrastructure currently being built by developers in the future. Accordingly, staff is recommending acceptance. Thank you.
Questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 27, ordinance zero two four dash two one?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number oh, two four dash two one.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Baldinagro, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. Okay, special budget meeting. This is the thing that hangs me up every year, but we'll, we'll work it out. We'll now regress our regular voting meeting and move to the special budget meeting to vote on final adoption of our annual budget for fiscal year 2024, '25. Our regular voting meeting is now recessed and a special budget meeting is called to order. Ms. Bauer, would you please introduce item 28, please? Resolution order 24 dash 43.
Resolution number R, 24 dash 43, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting the final budget of the amounts required for the public expense for the city of Glendale for the fiscal year 2024, 2025, setting forth the revenue and the amount to be raised by direct property taxation and adopting the city council's financial policies.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report this evening is Amy Lindsay, Assistant Director, Budget and Finance.
Okay, hold on. Okay, public hearing for item 28 is now open, resolution 24 dash 43.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps and Mr. Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Council. This resolution is to review the proposed fiscal year 2025 final budget, conduct a public hearing on the final budget, convene a special meeting to adopt the resolution formally approving the final operating capital, debt service and contingency appropriation budgets. The total budget for fiscal year 2025 is $1.48 billion. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Questions from the council? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Ms. Lindsay. I just wanted to clarify that the $55.6 million that's in the capital improvement project allocated to the black lot parking garage, that that is no longer being pursued, that, that-
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachoff, the, the project is still in the budget. It's a placeholder. And it's my understanding that the, the scope of that project has changed and that further meetings with council will occur in order to move that project forward.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. We have no speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyone else needing to speak on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item 28, resolution zero two four dash 43?
Yes, Mayor, I move we pass and adopt resolution number R, 24 dash 43.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Baldinagro. Your first budget vote, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. With that, I'm going to close our special meeting and reconvene our regular meeting. New business, Ms. Bauer, item 29, please.
Reappointment of Presiding City Judge Nicholas DiPiazza.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yep, okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request for the city council to reappoint Presiding City Judge Nicholas DiPiazza to a two-year term. His current term expires October 31st of 2024. Judge DiPiazza has served as Presiding Judge, Presiding City Judge in Glendale since 2020 and is eligible for reappointment to a two-year term. Should the council reappoint Judge DiPiazza, the two-year term would begin November 1st, 2024. Public input was sought per council direction regarding the reappointment of the City Judge DiPiazza, and all input has been provided to the city council for their consideration.
You done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, questions from the council? None, okay. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve item 29, reappointment of Presiding City Judge Nicholas DiPiazza.
Second.
Yeah, a motion from Councilmember Baldinagro, a second from Councilmember Clark. We will conduct a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Baldinagro. How do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Yes, I would like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I believe that Judge DiPiazza has done an excellent job in turning this court around and improving processes, procedures. And I cannot speak highly enough of the job that he has done for the city of Glendale. I am so pleased to have him as our Presiding Judge. So I wholeheartedly vote aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
I'd like to explain my vote also.
Go ahead.
I would like to follow those comments and express my gratitude for Judge DiPiazza for the, the great job that he has done in the court system over the last few years. I've watched it very closely. I know there's been a few hiccups here and there, but it's really been a pleasure to see the things that have changed and, and the direction that the court is going in. And with that, I vote aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I'm going to explain my vote. What, uh, what Judge DiPiazza has done, I think, is pretty amazing. He faced a lot of challenges and a lot of staff getting used to doing things a certain way and coming in, seeing how he believed that he could make the court system work better for the people. I think he's done that. I think some people's feathers got ruffled, but most people get comfortable in certain ways and they don't like change. And I think, I think he's brought good change. And, and last time I was over there, the staff all seemed to be smiling and that's something I haven't seen in a while. So I, I think they're accepting it. I think, I think you've done a good job. And I'm looking for another couple of years of, of some great work from you. With that, I do vote aye. That makes it pass unanimous. Okay, so moving on to council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Baldinagro, have you any?
No, sir.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes, sir. I'm probably going to steal your thunder, but this Saturday, there will be a shred event. And it is co-sponsored by the Glendale Police Department, Mayor Wires and myself. It will be Saturday, June 15th, from 8:00 AM to noon, or until the trucks get full. And the trucks get full pretty fast. So I would suggest getting there around 8:00 if you can. It's at what used to be Coyote Elementary School. It's now a system of care center run by the Glendale Elementary School District, in which the city also participates. That's at 76, 77 with West Bethany Home Road. So do you have old papers that are sensitive? Do you not want to overload your shredding machine? Put them in a box, a banker's box. Bring them over on Saturday and let the company do the shredding. They are very secure. Your papers will not get out or be seen by anybody. And they will be shredded and destroyed forever. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Melner?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of items. First, I'd like to give a shout out to the Parks and Rec Department. I received several compliments from a park improvement. For some time now, I've been pretty engaged with the Sunset Palms neighborhood. And we installed a splash pad there, as well as we did some major renovations with the sprinkler system. The park had some real problems with maintaining its green look. And with the new system, I've had a lot of compliments from peoples, really appreciating what we've done in that park. And I, I want to thank them for that, for all the work they put in doing, making that happen. And look forward to the other parks in my district and throughout the city as we move forward to replace sprinkler systems and make improvements to our parks. You know, it's not going to, it's going to take a few years, but we will get to the parks and the park in your neighborhood, wherever you live, those parks will be improved. And I'm really, uh, continue to support that, that program. And on another note, just wanted to recognize a resident of our city who recently passed, Ron Short. Got to know him pretty well over the last few years. He is a big historian for the city of Glendale. And I just wanted to recognize his service to the city of Glendale and, and send condolences to his family. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to offer my condolences to the friends and family of Ron Short. Just kind of an iconic man in our community and his, his resume was very impressive. But I did have another thing I wanted to say is I wanted to thank our city manager. It's been a few years and all, it goes all the way back to when Jack Friedline was here, talking about working and improving the, the appearance of our right-of-ways. And it's happening. It's, it's happening. I'm getting calls from residents. We're seeing medians being torn up and put back together. And we're really starting to, you know, I think, make the aesthetics of the city. Parks are important, but right-of-ways are seen by everyone, even people who don't live here, who drive through our city. And I think it's an important thing for us to focus on the appearance of our city and the right-of-ways and the medians. And that work is happening. So I want to thank staff and the city manager for moving that forward. And, you know, we've got budget money for that available now. But I think it's already having an effect because I'm hearing from a lot of residents that are very grateful for the investment in the right-of-ways. So thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I too would like to join in sending condolences to the family of Ron Short, his children, his wife Jane. Ron had probably done more for historic preservation in the city of Glendale than anyone that comes to mind. He's a longtime Glendale planner, helped establish, recognize several of our historic neighborhoods, historic buildings and other historic locations like Murphy Park and others, as well as individuals in our community that deserve historic recognition. He also served as president of the Glendale Historical Society for 10 years or more, which in itself is a feat. And at the same time, he was an HOA president in his community. So he's definitely an, an involved resident and a friend of the city. I'd also like to mention another friend of the city that recently passed away on Saturday, June 1st, Ed Sharp, who many of us would know and recognize. Were he here today? He'd be in the back of the room, manning a video camera probably. But Ed passed away on, last, the week ago Saturday. Ed and his wife Betty were our freelance journalists in our community. Ed was very interested in everything electronic, all forms of technology, especially that related to communications. He cut his teeth in radio, went on to television and from there cleared through the internet. In 2004, he and his wife established the Glendale Daily Planet, collecting and distributing news about what's going on in the city. At that time, two years later, and this is a remarkable feat, two years later, these freelancers earned a Rocky Mountain Emmy for work that they had done in reporting the, the news and events in Glendale. Ed was a veteran of the U.S. Air Force and a swell man. And he was, he was a talker. Ed was a talker. If, if you saw Ed on, on your caller ID, if you didn't have 20 minutes or an hour, you'd let it go to voicemail. So, you know, I, my congratulations out to St. Peter because he's probably got an airful of, from Ed by now. But I just think that it's important to recognize people in our community that have done well for us and are true friends of our community. Ed and Ron certainly fit that bill and our condolences, condolences extended to their family and their widows, Jane and Betty. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Captain, Mayor.
Okay, and I have nothing. Moving on to citizens' comments. Council makes this opportunity available to our citizens to bring information and business before the council that is not on the printed agenda. Before I welcome speakers to the podium, I want to remind this audience and anyone speaking tonight, this is a public hearing. It's a public meeting. As the chair, we're not going to tolerate any profanity or threats to the council or staff. If you violate the rules, we'll have you escorted out. We're going to go ahead and have Mr. Wilfong, if you would, sir, come on up. You know how it works. You have three minutes, sir, go ahead.
All right, Warren Wilfong, Alcatel District. I worked with Ron Short in the Code Committee Review, Review Committee. He was a great guy, like I said, great historian, helped out in a lot of things, so he'll be, be missed. I want to thank council on the repeat offender. This is a huge step, I think, in the right direction. But we have still another problem. And Councilmember Turner hit it right on the nose. You wanted to thank this council for giving the code compliance department the tools to fix the problem. But on February 27th, you removed our ability to do work and fix our neighborhood by reducing our ability to make complaints. How can we, you took the tool away from us, our, the residents, to fix our neighborhoods. You reduced the amount of area that we can complain about. To me, that's probably more important than anything else. I see something down two miles away from my house, I should be able to complain about it. Another thing that Tomachoff touched on. Cases are open for five months and they're put on hold. Well, the reason why we reduced the amount of cases allowed to complain about is because these cases are on hold and there are excessive open cases and backlog. Let me make it very clear. When a resident makes a complaint in the system and it's, hits the enter button, the resident has no more control of that complaint. It is up to the code compliance department. But city manager held that against the residents because there's an excessive amount of cases open. Well, they're open for five or six months because they're on hold. Or they have excessive observations. How is that the resident's fault? Why did you take our tool away to fix our neighborhood? Why did you do that? You did it. You sold it to the council. You blamed that on us. When it was clearly that, if you look at these cases, it is the code compliance department gaming the system and allowing the residents to allow the system to be abused. I, I can't make it any clearer. So my expectation is now that we will get our five complaints back and we should be able to complain about anything in the city. If this repeat offender system works, they should be closing cases within three inspections. As it's written in inside their policy. The policy never is followed. And I want to make one quote. At the end of our code committee, Review Committee, Councilmember Clark made it very clear. This is what she said, I'll be trying to be close. The code committee did excellent work, but I'm still concerned about the enforcement. Close. Am I close?
Thank you. Mr. Dibler?
Hi, my name is James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. Today, I'm speaking to you. We've gone the possible abandoned shopping center at 67 Avenue and Calumback Row near the former Value Village Fifth Store and Taco Bell. Two weeks ago, I took a picture of the partially abandoned shopping center. There is a lot of graffiti on the wall. Also, there is broken glass on the sidewalk. This shopping center is a safety hazard for residents who shop at the store. I would like the city of Glendale to call compliance to expect the shopping center at 67 Avenue and Calumback Row on the southeast corner to make sure they meet building code compliance. Also, the city of Glendale needs to check the Benz Arizona Local Discount Store for only Value Villas to make sure the billing is up to code. Finally, there is a other vacant Value Village Fifth Store at 54th Avenue and Glendale Avenue on the southeast corner. There is a lot of items in the store that the former owner has left behind. The inside of the store doesn't meet the city of Glendale building code compliance. Also, there is a lot of cracked floor tiles that cause safety concerns for the customers who will shop at this store in the future. who will shop at this store in the future. I feel sorry about Ron Short has passed away. He was a great gentleman for the city of Glendale. He did excellent work for our community. Thank you for taking the time to concern this matter.
Thank you, James. With no further business before this council, tonight, I'd like to thank everyone for attending. There's no objection from the council. We adjourn.